Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is, I think it's, what time is it? Seven oh three, and we are running just a little bit late, but thank you for your patience, and we will go ahead and get started. Today is Thursday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, and we are here for the Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting and public hearing. So with that, we will go ahead and get started with a roll call of commissioners. Director Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Mark Fields.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Melanie Stiles.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Joel Presley.
Present.
Commissioner Eleanor Anderson. Commissioner Keisha Chapman. Commissioner Joseph Fields. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, and amen. And now we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please? Oh, we do have Commissioner.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we will adopt the minutes, I'm sorry, adopt the agenda as printed. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hear and none, the agenda is approved. And we do have Commissioner Chapman, that is here now. Now we will have an approval of the October minutes. Can I have a motion, please? Can I get a second, please? It has been moved and properly seconded that we approve the October minutes. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hear and none, the minutes for October two thousand and twenty-five have now been adopted. Ms., Director Smith, do we have any old business?
We do not.
Hear and none, we will skip down to our new business. Director Smith.
Thank you. In reference to item number one on the agenda, one moment, please. In reference to item number one on the agenda, case number P two zero two five V dash zero zero one dash zero nine, and case number P two zero two five V dash zero zero two dash zero nine, the applicant NSG Capital LLC, Stephen Golf, property located at twelve forty-seven and twelve fifty-three Washington Road. The applicant is seeking a variance from Article J, infill five F two, to allow some interest siding for two single-family homes, case type is a variance.
I'm sorry, we just need to get. Oh, okay. All right, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, but I did skip the rules for public hearing, and we will go into that now. Thank you. The public hearing rules are as follows. Persons both favoring and opposing the proposed case. Excuse me, one second.
Persons both favoring.
And opposing the proposed case will be provided an opportunity to address the commission. The applicant for the zoning case, or the applicant's designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak first, followed by other speakers in favor of the proposal for a total of fifteen minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning case will then be permitted to speak for a total of fifteen minutes. By majority vote, the commission may increase the total time of speakers, provided that each side is given the same amount of time. If there is more than one speaker for a side, the chair or the presiding officer may limit the time allotted to each speaker, individual speaker other than the zoning applicant. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his or her allotted time for rebuttal. Speakers must adhere to the rules of decorum. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall identify him or herself and state his or her current address. Each speaker must speak only to the merits of the proposed zoning ordinance under consideration, shall address remarks only to the commission, and shall refrain from making personal attacks on any other speaker. The presiding officer may refuse a speaker the right to continue if any, if after being, after first being cautioned. The speaker continues to violate the rules of the decorum. Ladies and gentlemen, you have heard our rules for public hearing. What do I hear from the commissioners?
Madam Chair, motion to open the public hearing.
Do I have a second? It has been moved and properly seconded that we are now open for public hearing. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hear and now, we are now open for public hearing. Director Smith.
Yes, in reference to case number P two zero two five V dash zero zero one dash zero nine, P two zero two five V dash zero zero two dash zero nine, the property located at twelve forty-seven and twelve fifty-three Washington Road. Applicant NSSG Capital LLC, Stephen Golf, case type is a variance. This recommendation is to defer this case this time.
Commissioners, we have heard from Director Smith that we are being asked to defer that case, and it ends in two zero zero two dash zero nine, and the one prior to that ends in zero zero one dash zero nine. Thank you. Is there anyone that is attending the meeting this evening, wants to come forward and speak in favor of this case? Do we have anyone that wants to speak in favor of? Do we have anyone here to speak against the case? If so, please come forward. I do not see anyone coming forward to speak for or against the case. So now we may go ahead and close the public hearing.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we will close the public hearing on P zero two five V, as in Victor, dash zero zero one dash zero nine, P two oh two five Victor, dash zero zero two dash zero nine. What do I hear, commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to defer.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we defer the case. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hear and none, the case has been deferred. Thank you.
Madam Chair, was there a second?
Second on that one.
Did I not get a second from one of the commissioners here on this case? Did I get a second?
Yeah, a second.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Yes.
Actually, what I did, I think I just, I don't think I closed the public hearing. Did I close the public hearing?
Yes, I made a motion to close.
And then we had a motion for the case.
To accept it and defer it.
So we don't have any open actions on that. We're done. We're done. Okay, thank you. Director Smith, the second case, please.
Yes, in reference to item number two under new business, case number P two zero two five RZ dash zero zero one dash one zero, the applicant is Horace Walker. The property is located at fourteen sixteen East Vista Avenue. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from R one A Urban Residential District to R two, two-family residential district. The case type is a rezoning.
You, is there, is the applicant present? You may come forward.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we will now open the public hearing on stated case, P two zero two five RZ dash zero zero one dash one zero. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hear and now, the case is now open. You may go ahead, please. Okay.
Now, now I'll turn it down. Well, good evening, Madam Chair and the rest of the committee. My name is Horace Walker. I am the property owner of fourteen sixteen East Vista Avenue, and my purpose here is to rezone my property from a R one A to a R two, two-family residence.
Okay, and I need to get your address, please.
Yes, fourteen sixteen East Vista Avenue.
Okay. You may continue.
Okay, thank you. This is for administrative staff for my mortgage company. They are requesting that I rezon this to an R two versus an R one A, and I am just at their disclosure to have seen through that in order for me to complete my mortgage ownership application.
Thank you. Do you have any visuals or anything for the commissioners to see, or?
I do have a picture that I sent in last week, and then also I think there's a site survey picture as well.
So what we're seeing now is the only visual? Okay, all right, thank you.
So as you can, as you can see, all of these properties on this street, they're all duplexes and multifamily style homes, and the goal is just to rezone my specific property back to what is original zoning was intended for. There is no further development that's going to happen to this property. Nothing's changing. It's going to remain the function as a two-family home. It is a duplex property, like I said, along with all the other properties on the street. We just want to rezone it back to what is originally intended for.
Okay, thank you. Does that complete your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in favor of this rezoning? Is there anyone that wants to come forward in favor of? Is there anyone opposed to this rezoning? If so, please come forward. Anyone opposed? See and none, commissioners, what do I hear?
Madam Chair.
Do I get a staff recommendation now? Yeah, we got a question.
Motion to public.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on case number P two zero two five RZ dash zero zero one dash one zero. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hear and none, public hearing is not closed.
Staff.
Do you have any? I'm sorry?
Staff will give their report.
Okay, staff recommendation, please.
Yes, in reference to this case known as case number P two zero two five RZ dash zero zero one dash one zero, property located at fourteen sixteen East Vista Avenue. As stated, the applicant is requesting a rezoning, to rezone from our urban residential zoning district to our two-family zoning district. And if you see the map appear on the screen, the property outline in the blue, light blue, that is the property. If you look on this slide here, the current zoning, as stated, is the R one A Urban Residential District. Notated on this zoning map is, if you see the yellow rectangle, the yellow one, that property was actually rezoned in two thousand and three to R two as well, and it's just one house over from this proposed property rezoning. The future land use map designation is traditional neighborhood, and typical zoning districts in the traditional neighborhood would include R one RL, R one A, RT, and R two, and R three. The applicant is requesting an R two zoning, which is a typical zoning district in the traditional urban neighborhood, as shown on the future land use map on the screen. A staff recommendation is approval of the rezoning from R one A Urban Residential to R two, two-family zoning district, and if you look on the screen, you'll see the snapshot of the approval of the property located one house over that was approved on May twentieth, two thousand and thirteen, to the same zoning designation. That concludes staff's report and recommendation.
Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Okay, I see lights on down to my left, so maybe they're just on. So if there are no questions, commissioners, what do I hear?
Madam Chair, move the motion to close the public hearing.
We've already closed, we're just waiting on.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation for approval.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we accept staff's recommendation. All of those in favor, let it be known by the word. Do I hear any discussion on the motion? Hear and none, we may go forward with the motion. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hear and none, the staff's recommendation has been accepted by the commissioners, and thank you, approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, committee.
Thank you. Director Smith, the next case, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, in reference to item number three under new business, case number P two zero two five M dash zero zero one dash one zero, the applicant, Mr. Okoye, property located at fourteen fifty-seven Gus Thornhill Junior Drive. The applicant's requesting a zoning condition modification for ordinance two hundred dash zero two three, to increase the density from seven-town home units to twelve-town home units. Case type is a zoning condition modification. The applicant is present.
Thank you. Applicant, you may come forward, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I want to.
I'm sorry, one second, let me hear from Attorney Wiggins.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, we open the public hearing.
Do I have a second? It has been moved and properly seconded that we open the public hearing on case number P two zero two five ZM dash zero zero one dash one zero. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hear and none, the public hearing is now open. Applicant, you may go ahead, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Effesi Daniel Okoye, here for fourteen fifty-seven Gus Thornhill Drive. May I plug in my tongue drive in here?
Staff will help you accommodate that.
Okay, so this is a twin home community in a point five eight eight acre parcel located at fourteen fifty-seven Gus Thornhill Drive. We're proposing three stories with two-car garages, neighborhood-friendly design, and is aligned with the goals of redevelopment of the neighborhood. And our revised value proposition is enhanced revitalization, affordability, and better visual appeal. So what we're trying to do here is modification of condition number four, which is no more than seven building lots to enable the practicing economic development of twelve, fee simple twin homes, we call it twin homes. So our revised design is in compliance with the Cleveland Overlay District to allow up to twelve units on this parcel. The lot width, which, and the revised design complies with a twenty-five-foot lot width requirement, and as far as the feasibility, in the original design, the offering was between four hundred and five hundred thousand. Our revised design is more affordable, within two hundred and three hundred thousand dollars in price range. So with our design, hold on one second, let me get to this, that's what it would look like with a twelve-town homes, oh, twin homes, actually, what they call it. So the current design, the current design that is approved, the seven town, the seven lots, it's similar to what we're, we're not really changing much. The project value is about the same. The total square footage, what is approved, well, what we're proposing, is about the same. The total footprint is close enough, it's about the same ninety-six hundred square feet, than previous lot coverage. The current design is sixty-nine percent, ours is sixty-six percent. And if you can see, the current design has a total building footprint, our, well, our, the prior design is eighty-five, twenty-six, and the current design is ninety-six hundred. So it's kind of, we're not changing much, is the point I'm trying to make here, except creating higher density, and at the same time complying with the Cleveland Overlay District. And now, here are two pictures that shows what the previous design looks like, and what we're proposing. Seven unit, the average unit size in the prior design is thirty-one ninety-seven, and what we're proposing is two thousand square foot. The price range in the prior one is four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, and ours, what we're proposing, is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So what we're doing is more affordable housing, and still keeping up the aesthetics of the design. So I put up old, different communities, Sterling Village Town Homes and Martin Street Town Homes, we're just trying to show that, I guess, prior to the Cleveland Overlay District, these were approved at a minimum lot size of seventeen hundred square feet for Sterling Village, and twenty-four hundred square foot for the Martin Street Town Home. So what we're trying to ask for is not far from what's already been done in the past. And I just want to say thank you, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. And if there's some questions that I can't answer, if you don't mind, I would like to defer to my, my development partner, if that's, if that's okay.
So that concludes your presentation.
Yes, yes.
Do we have, thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
It has been moved and properly seconded that we close the public hearing. We have to hear from anyone in favor. That's okay. Yeah, thank you. Do we have anyone to speak in favor of the project? Anyone here to speak in favor of? Do we have anyone here to speak against the project? Anyone here against? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, yes, ma'am. Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that we close the public hearing. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hear and none, it has been moved and properly seconded that we close the public hearing. Thank you, applicant. We don't have anyone speaking against. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant?
I actually do.
Commissioner, go ahead, please.
I was just trying to familiarize myself with what a twin home was versus.
Sorry, one second. If you turn your mic off, there won't be any feedback. Thank you.
Okay.
I was just trying to familiarize myself with.
Turn your mic off.
Off, okay, like.
Okay, now we're ready.
I'm trying to familiarize myself with the difference between a duplex and a twin home and a townhouse, and I'm looking up the definition, it says consists of two separate living units that share a common wall that are located on two separate lots. This is not two separate lots, is it?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, so it's going to be two separate lots, so it's fee simple, so it's really town homes, but in sets of twos, and we didn't call it duplex, because duplex is more like rental.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we just call it twin homes to kind of match what we're trying to put out there. So it's really just town homes in sets of twos. That's really what it is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I have a question. Can you go back to, I believe it's like four slides back?
Slide, slide what, four?
No. What number is that? Go back. Where you have the comparison of the, what you had before and what you have now, that one, go back.
Yes, 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 yes.
No, no, go back, one more.
One more? This one? No?
No, 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 go, that one.
Okay.
No, go back, one more, you went too fast.
This one?
No. There's one that has.
Two homes, this, this one?
Go back, you pass it again. That one, that one. The current design and the prior design. So you're losing the space in the new design for the homeowner, right? They're losing space, so you're adding more units.
And shrinking the square footage of the property.
Shrinking the square footage?
Yes.
You're going from twenty-four to twenty-two.
So in total square footage, it's, so our current design will have more square footage when you aggregate it, but in individual units, the old design was much larger. So what we're trying to do, we're just slightly above the total square footage from the prior design, but we are fitting more units in that twenty-four hundred square feet. So the point we're trying to make over here is like the previous lot coverage is slightly, it's, it's, it's close enough, so we're not making major changes as far as total square footage, and the total project value is the same, close enough, but the main difference is we have more units, and at affordable prices, it's the point we're trying to, what we're trying to accomplish.
So were you concerned mostly about increasing the number of units or reducing the cost of the units?
So in order to reduce the cost, to make it economically feasible, we had to increase the number of units to make it, because we can't, in our current market conditions, it's more affordable to go with a lower-cost buildings than the higher-cost buildings. So to achieve that, we needed more, more units, and the total project value is still, that's still close enough, but as far as affordability, what we're presenting is more affordable than the prior design.
So does each unit have a garage? Is it a two-car garage or?
Two-car garage per unit, yes.
Per unit, okay. For now, that's, that ends my questions. Commissioners, are there any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
I have a question with the density.
Okay.
Within a half a acre. You're going to, you're going to increase the footage by five units. What about the, I'm concerned about the crowding, overcrowding, and. What about the, the, I'm concerned about the crowding, overcrowding, and eventually the serviceability of the, of the units.
Well, so it's not going to be overcrowded. So with the design, what I can show you, we, we, we meet the, as, we comply with the Cleveland Overlay District, right? We're at a 900 footprint per unit on there. Average lot size over there is 1,875 when you average them all out. So we're not, we're not doing anything that it hasn't been approved, you know, we haven't, what we're doing is something we've seen before in that area. So we're looking at a, on average, 1,875 square foot lot size per unit, and that complies with the Cleveland Overlay District.
And the actual units would be smaller than the previous.
Well, it would be smaller than the previous. The previous was, uh, what, over 3,000 square feet?
It's a bit smaller bedroom room than the...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Are there any more questions? So what amenities do you offer for...
I mean, there's going to be garbage, there's going to be garbage, I'm sorry. Pickup, as far as like, like a public area, like a, um, we have plans, we're still refining what those plans are going to be as far as like what we can provide, like a, like a community, maybe like a small area where like a park or, just, just an, we're trying to, we're trying to, we're still refining that process, what kind of amenities we'll have on there.
So you really don't have any space left over once you build these?
Say it one more time?
You don't have any space really for amenities?
Not, not, no, so, so the main thing we're thinking, it may be like a, we're still refining it. I don't know if it will be possible, but like a common area, like a lobby room, or maybe a gym or something. We're still trying to figure out what that is going to be. It hasn't been decided yet, but we're thinking about that, yeah.
Thank you. Our commissioners, that concludes my questions. I don't see any lights on for any of the commissioners, so what do I hear from staff?
Can we already do, anyone in favor? Have we already done anyone in favor, anyone opposed? Then yes, you can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion to...
Motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded to close the public hearing. All of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes, hear or none, public hearing is not closed. Thank you, and you may be seated, thank you. Director Smith, what do I hear from staff?
We're, we're getting our presentation pulled up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In reference to this project, property located at 1457 Gus Thornhill Drive, property known as P2025ZM-001-10. This case type is a modification to a condition of zoning that was placed on this application when it was rezoned back in 2023. The condition was known as condition number four in the ordinance, and the condition was to maximize the number of units on site to seven. The applicant is asking for an increase of five additional units. As you see here is the current zoning map. The property was rezoned to RT, which is our residential townhome zoning district. The size of the property is approximately a little over a half an acre, and it's located on the corner of Irene Kid and Gus Thornhill, as you see on the zoning map, the rectangular shaped property highlighted in blue. This is a map of our future land use map, showing that the property has a designation of redevelopment neighborhood. In redevelopment neighborhood, there is a maximum of 4.8 dwelling units per acre. And the city's goals for redevelopment, redevelopment neighborhood is to maintain a historic nature along with providing reinforcement for stability of these type of neighborhoods, and it's also encouraging home ownership and promoting diversity of housing types. The typical housing type in redevelopment neighborhood includes zonings of single-family, RL, our urban residential development zoning district, which is R1A, RT is a typical zoning district, which is what the property is zoned. R2 and R3 are also typical zoning districts in the redevelopment neighborhood. This property is also included in the Cleveland Avenue Overlay District, and the applicant is proposing a maximum number of lots that the Cleveland Overlay District would allow, which is 12. The applicant also intends to alter the previous proposed units by reducing the size to allow for the additional lots, as he stated in his presentation. What you see on the screen now is the ordinance 200-023. This is the ordinance that approved the rezoning back in 2023 for the property to be rezoned from I1 Light Industrial to RT. And if you see in section one of the conditions, you'll see the five conditions that were placed on the property. All of those conditions will stay intact. If this is approved, condition number four would change to state no more than 12 unit, 12 buildable units. Staff recommendation for the zoning condition modification for ordinance 200-023 to increase density from seven-town home units to 12-town home units with the following condition. Did I say we recommend approval? Okay, staff recommends approval. And with the condition, applicant shall meet all development standards of the Cleveland Overlay District and develop no more than 12 buildable lots. That's staff's recommendation, and it concludes our report.
Thank you. Attorney Wiggins, is it okay if I ask Director Smith a question with what you just presented? Director Smith, does this project satisfy the historic portion of what the overlay states? I think that was probably in your slides two back. If you go back two slides, you'll see the historic statement there. And I just want to know if this project complies, conforms to that.
The application conforms to the request for the zoning modification, which is what he's asking for. The architectural design, the Cleveland Overlay District, those criteria points will be satisfied at the plan review stage.
Okay, thank you. What do I hear from staff? I'm sorry, from commissioners?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to deny the, so I have another question before we go into that, too. Is that, my motion is to deny staff's recommendation.
Make a motion that we go to discussion on the side of...
Wait, wait, wait.
So...
You have a motion on the floor, let's see if they get a second.
That's right.
Motion is to deny the application, is that correct?
Yes.
So that would be different from staff's recommendation to fine.
Okay.
Let's see if they get a second. If it does, then we can go into session. If doesn't, we can entertain this new motion.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to deny, and do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All of those in favor, let it be known by a show of hands. Or saying aye, because it can't be recorded with just a show of hands, so...
Aye.
I move that we have a discussion on the motion.
We have a discussion on the motion? We have the motion that has not been completed, because I don't...
You had a motion and a second.
Uh-huh.
On the motion to deny.
To deny.
How would people vote in favor of that motion?
And what I'll do is ask for, yes, thank you. Verbal, yes or no?
On the motion to deny, is what you're going on.
On the motion to deny.
Yes.
And we'll start with Commissioner Mark Fields.
Can I call it, please?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Please do.
Commissioner Mark Fields?
Can I, I just want to get clarification, because we are...
No, sir, this is not the time for discussion. This is voting on Commissioner Chapman's motion to deny the modification to the zoning.
Commissioner Mark Fields?
Yes.
Yes, to deny?
Yes, to deny.
Commissioner Miller?
No. No, it's denied, okay?
Commissioner Melanie Stiles?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
No.
Commissioner Joel Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Eleanor Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Keisha Chapman? Commissioner Joseph Fields?
Yes.
We should have had a discussion before the, to vote.
So the motion to deny passes, five to three.
The motion to deny has passed. So the applicant is, the request has been denied. Yes, and it will go to mayor and council.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
A point of discussion?
A question for Attorney Wiggins?
It didn't occur out of like for, I think, it should have been... A, a point of discussion?
Oh, I see what you're saying, after she called the motion and the second, she didn't get discussion before the vote.
Correct, that's correct.
Then you can go back and do it, so you can get...
Go back through the entire motion?
Well, you have the motion, you have a second, but yes, we should get discussion, please correct.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second on the motion.
Yes.
So before we vote, we will have a discussion. So there are commissioners that want to have a discussion, I think you have a discussion item?
Yes, yes.
Please go ahead.
I want to discuss the fact that it was origi, I'm sorry, it was originally rezoned for, for seven units. And I think that because of the, the size of the lot, a half acre, to put, to increase it to 12 units, I think that's excessive. So I, I don't believe that you can actually increase a dwelling on that space for that many units, for different, for that many different families. So that's one of the reasons why I would like to deny this motion and revert it back to the original seven units that was originally authorized in the council rezoning in the past in 2023. So I think we should just leave it there, if he's going to do it at all. Should be, be done with the seven units and not the 12 units. But I don't believe that the, the space is big enough to accommodate dwellings and families in that smaller space. So that's my objection to it.
Commissioner Fields, does that conclude your comments?
Yes, it does.
Thank you so much, yes, sir.
Okay, I, I understand where you're going. If you look at the average lot size, it's .2 acres, or even less than that, over across East Point. And so if you look directly down the street, um, just north of the site, and you see townhomes that are in smaller lots, it matches the context of the neighborhood, it increases the density of the neighborhood, which we all need for the businesses that we want to serve in the neighborhood. The economic environment don't allow for bigger houses. It is, it's the missing middle that we're looking for in this city for everybody. I don't understand why. So that's my comment. It's, it's a perfect project for the location.
Thank you, Commissioner Watson, are there any other comments?
So, yes, so I just...
Commissioner Chapman?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that we're, I'm understanding this. My denial was based on the fact that there should be seven, or no more than seven, but the proposal is to 12, right? So do we, is there an opportunity to approve of conditions that it's no more than a certain amount on that land? I mean, admittedly, I may have jumped the gun, maybe a little bit, but I just, I wanted to make sure that we have, go ahead, Commissioner Smith.
Yes, that's the intent of the application, is to put a maximum cap. They were moving that max from seven to 12.
Right, and so I guess, so my position still stands, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Does that conclude your comments? Thank you, sir, go ahead.
Madam Chair, woman, my thoughts is, before we do this, will it set a, a new precedence from the previous that going forward, lots of this size, even if it doesn't fit, the new minimum will then thereby be 12, instead of eight? What I think I saw on a previous slide from staff, it was, the max was eight. Four to eight for a full acre? For an acre. So are we setting new precedent that whether either of us are on this panel?
So is that a question for staff? That you have?
Yes.
Okay, so Director Smith, I think this is a question that perhaps you or your staff can answer. And this is in reference to the lot size and what the presidents were setting.
Commissioner, Commissioner Presley, I don't, I don't think it's setting a precedent, for the most part. You are correct, for this particular zoning, future land use, it allows a density of four to eight dwelling units per acre, per acre. So if this was an acre, the max would be eight units that could actually fit on this lot. This property sits within the Cleveland Overlay District, and when you apply those requirements, those development standards, it allows a density, it allows a building footprint or a lot size, which is much less than the RT zoning district, and I don't want to get too technical, because I can. The, the minimum lot size in the Cleveland Avenue Overlay is 1,875 square feet, that's the lot size. So that's where they're taking this half-acre site and trying to apply the Cleveland Avenue Overlay District lot size, and that's where they're coming up with the 12 units, for the most part. So they are in compliant with the Cleveland Avenue Overlay District. However, it does exceed the future land use designation of, what I've actually, when you look at the future land use, technically, that's no more than four units on that half-acre site. So they are in compliant on one end and, and not compliant as it relates to the actual future land use.
Does that comp... Does that complete your, I mean, are you satisfied with the answer, or do you want to...
Yes, he clarified that eloquently, very clearly.
Okay.
Now that he, to, to stay within this neighborhood of the overlay...
The Overlay District, Cleveland Avenue...
I will rescind my no vote if?
We're gonna call the vote again?
Yes, Attorney Wiggins.
Okay, did I have another question? Yes, um, Commissioner Fields?
And I, then thank you. I just wanted to clarify because in, when I'm reading here the 1,875 square feet lot, uh, square feet per lot, and then it says in that overlay district is eight to 11 in what I'm reading here. And so then it's even, unless this is incorrect, it's above what I'm seeing. By one.
On lots eight through 11.
That's not the, that's not this.
That's not the number.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
So for the rest of us, what was the clarity there? And give us the page of what you're looking at so we can all look?
On page four of seven, I was reading that and I was seeing the overlay and the square foot, but then it says there's districts of lots eight through 11. And so I wasn't, I was misreading. I was thinking it was the number of lots. So this is just for lots eight, nine, 10, and 11. Thank you.
So does that complete your questions? Okay, so we have another question here. Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, yeah, I'm, my question, um, I don't know if I need to address it to Kimberly or to Brittany or somebody else, but it seems like there is a big discrepancy between number of units permitted for acreage versus lot size. He can get the 1,875 square foot lot size, 12 of them, out of this particular acreage. But they're confined to seven, eight units, well, according to, you know, the acreage. So I'm wondering if there is, when we do the, um, you know, do the, do the plan update, can we look at this and really dig into it so we can get rid of these discrepancies? Cause it seems unfair to applicants to come forward with something that matches A, but then B doesn't match. That's all.
Yes, we will be looking at that in the zoning ordinance rewrite.
Commissioners, we have had discussions and I see another light on. I'm sorry.
Just one more point of view, Madam Chair. Before we outright deny and or approve, we do, still can put parameters and conditions.
You can put conditions on it, yes.
Right, instead of just an outright, just something to, uh, think about.
So with the motion, um, that is pending, we condition it at that point. Okay, so Commissioners, do I have, excuse me, a motion? And Attorney Wiggins, do we need to say anything about the previous motion before we put another one on the floor? So Director Smith, can you look, pull up that last page where you had, it, it sounds like they're just conditions that would ordinarily be there so that the person or the commissioner that is making the motion can actually see what you already have? Didn't you have, you didn't have a, a page that had a one or two condition?
Yeah, there's one condition right there.
Yeah, okay. So whoever makes the motion, if you're interested in looking at the conditions before you make your motion, we can do that. So do I have a new motion? Uh, we're rescinding this one.
Motion to rescind.
Do we need a? Yeah, we don't need to rescind. We just need a new motion. If, if you want to have a new motion.
I motion to approve.
Second.
Is the motion to approve to include the conditions?
Not additional conditions.
Well, I'm only speaking about conditions on the, can you go ahead and then?
Conditions from the staff?
Cause it's already conditions on the property as a, am I correct?
Right, that's.
So the conditions that were on the screen were conditions of when it was rezoned with the seven. So the question is whether you wanna continue those to the same conditions if you're approving it up to 12.
Yes. Motion to approve with the current conditions minus the seven unit lot size of buildable your lots.
So if you want to make a motion to approve, you would make a motion to approve staff's recommendation to include the conditions from when it was?
Seven.
Approved except. So that would encompass the 12 and it would encompass what was on the conditions when it was approved for seven.
Okay, I motion to approve staff recommendations with the conditions from the previous approval.
It has been moved and properly second that we accept staff's recommendation to approve. All of those in favor, let it be?
Plus, plus the conditions from the previous.
Plus the conditions from the previous zoning with the seven units. All of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye. Any discussion? Hearing none. What do I hear from staff, from commissioners? All of those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
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 Opposes? Hearing none. Case number P two zero two five Z M dash zero zero one dash one dash one zero has been approved. Thank you. Any more cases? Case, the last case that we have, Director Smith?
Yes, in reference to item number four under new business, case number P two zero two five R Z dash zero zero two dash one zero. The applicant is city of East Point. The property is located at 24 18 Millet Street. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from an unzoned zoning district to M X C I, mixed use commercial industrial zoning district. Case type is a rezon- a city initiated rezoning.
Commissioners, can I get a motion, please, to open the public hearing on this case? Yes, sir.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that the public hearing is now open on case number P two zero two five R Z dash zero zero two dash one zero. Is the applicant present?
The applicant is present and the applicant is requesting a deferral on this item.
Thank you. Do we have anyone, do we have to go through, do we have anyone here in favor of, of this application? Anyone in favor of? Do we have anyone that is not positioned to the zoning, the rezoning on this case? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners, what do I hear?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Motion to close the public hearing.
It has been moved and properly second that the public hearing is closed. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Hearing none, public hearing is not closed. Staff, what is your request or your recommendation?
Staff is recommending deferral of this item.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to accept?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation for deferral on this project.
Second.
It has been moved and properly second that we accept staff's recommendation to defer P two zero two five R Z dash zero zero two dash one zero. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Hearing none. This case is deferred. Thank you. Staff, do you have any, um, announcements?
We do not.
Uh, Commissioners, do we have any announcements?
Yeah, I'd like a little clarification on the, uh, the party that we're gonna be having on the 10th.
Staff, do you have any updates on the December event?
Is there a specific question?
Is there a specific question, Commissioner? Commissioner, is there a specific question?
Yeah, just wanted to make sure we gotta have it or we're not gonna have it.
We are going to have it.
We're going to have it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's my question.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Okay.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
It has been moved and properly second that we will adjourn to this evening's meetings. All those in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Opposes? Hearing none. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.